I'd like to read the mayor's welcome before we start our meeting. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming to the monthly meeting of the Loudoun City Council. My name is Mayor Jeff Harrison, on behalf of the council staff, I want to welcome you here tonight. Tennessee law gives every Tennessee the right to attend city council meetings and to observe how our government is doing business. We appreciate that each of you have taken time from your own personal schedule to be here tonight, see how our city government works. You should have a copy of tonight's agenda, if you don't have a copy of the agenda, pick one up on the table in the back of the room. This is your guide as to topics we're going to discuss tonight. In order to conduct efficient, businesslike meetings, the council has adopted specific rules to follow. Primarily, these rules are designed to keep the meeting moving, ensure that all points of view are heard and considered, provide for common courtesy. A few minutes will name will come to the place on the agenda entitled Citizens Input, where anyone who has signed in can speak to council, or then they're encouraged to do so. We do however ask that you wait until you've been recognized, and then approach their podium and follow the simple rules. At the beginning of the presentation, please state your name for the record, address all your questions to the mayor, and avoid the use of improper language, profanity, or other inappropriate conduct. Once this portion of the meeting is over, the council will proceed with the remainder of the agenda. You're welcome to stay and observe the meeting, but be advised that public comments will be limited. Wes, and everyone remember, we're doing the people's business here tonight, a very important responsibility for all of us. Help us do this business by observing the rules we have established. Again, when welcoming to our meeting tonight, glad that you're here. As you can see, we've got a, you've seen the agenda, we've got a full agenda for tonight. Glad that everyone came out for this meeting. First item on the agenda is the approval of the regular minutes, July 15, 2019. I was not here for that meeting. Vice Mayor Dixon chaired that meeting, so Attorney Pryor, if you'd like to repeat?
Yes, Mayor Harris, I would be doing a review of your record.
Okay, we'll take these two items separately, there's two meetings that have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, July 15, 2019. Thank you, Councilmember Bevins, have a second. Thank you, Councilmember Brewster. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Next is the approval of the special call meeting, July 29, 2019.
I was not in attendance at that meeting.
Okay, I've read over, do everybody have a chance to read over, they appear accurate, to have a motion to approve these minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Dixon, have a second.
I'll say, have a motion.
Thank you, Councilmember James. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is fuel bids, we have two of those as well.
We have fuel bids for July and August, we'll take July 1st, a low bid from Rogers Petroleum, unleaded gasoline at $1.95, diesel at $1.97, for a total projected amount of $15,724. The August bid came in at $1.75, unleaded, and $1.81 diesel, total projected amount of $14,101.25, and that was also from Rogers Petroleum.
Okay, we vote on these together. Attorney Pryor, do you see a problem now?
No.
Okay, we're going to combine these unless anyone has a problem with that. Have a motion. Thank you, Councilmember Brewster, have a second.
I'll say.
Vice Mayor Dixon, seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say no. Motion carries. Next item is resolution, accepting an Appalachian Regional Commission managing grant and approving Thompson Engineering.
Yes, this is a recap from our workshop, where Thompson Engineering, represented by Engineer Jamie Blanton, presented a plan going forward for the dredging of Stevie Creek. You can see an itemization of their estimated amounts. Task one is the dredging of Stevie Creek, which is estimated $8,735. Task two is a site-wide survey and utility coordination, $6,500. Task three, a long-range planning development document, which one can use to not just dredge, but plan for future uses around the surrounding area, that's $11,290. Task four is a harbor modification construction design, something that could ultimately be used to bid out, $5,275.
Okay, we discussed this at the workshop, and as Manager Ross said, it represents a hearing from that firm. Have a motion to approve this.
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion to approve, Councilmember Brewster, have a second.
I'll say.
Vice Mayor Dixon, seconds, is there any discussion about it? I think there has been a request of Vice Mayor Dixon about if we form a committee, there's some citizens that may want to like to serve on the committee going forward, if there's a committee forming, we keep that in mind.
Absolutely, and Butch Thompson has already provided some great input, I think will continue to do so. The input and the historic knowledge of this community can do nothing but add value to my project.
I agree, so we'll be counting on somebody to help with that. Any other discussion before we vote?
If people's not familiar with what we're talking about, we're talking about dredging Pearl Harbor, putting in bog dam, with a guaranteed winter pool of four-foot of water. And, long-term, I hope, in my lifetime, seeing a Caboose-type restaurant, or that type of restaurant, down the water. This is the first step.
Thanks, Councilmember Brewster, any other discussion, comments? Have that motion, a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, no. Motion carries. Second item is establishing investment policy.
Yes, this is put together by Nicole Curtis and her team, it is spoken of at utility board meetings. There's a combined need of both city and LUP, to maximize our interest earnings for idle funds. This would permit city and accounting to move these funds to higher interest-bearing accounts, along in accordance with this policy.
Okay, again, we discussed this at the workshop, this is a good move forward, to shop this around, you know, keep in mind that the city recorder, finance director, city manager, this designates them as investment officers of the city utilities, to make, you know, better ground it forward, to make those decisions. They will keep us posted and updated on those. Do I have a motion to approve this investment policy?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Councilmember Bevins, have a second.
I'll say.
Vice Mayor Dixon, seconds, all those, any questions, any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Next item is accepting a quote for city park, parking area payment.
Yes, Ellis Scruggs, Public Works Department, and Mark Carroll, Parks Department, worked together to procure these quotes. Based upon your feedback at the workshop, we have drafted a resolution that would select Stringfield to pay following three lots, Mines Club Pavilion, Marimont Shelter, and Loudoun Dog Park, that cost $179,325.
Okay, as Manager Ross said, this was discussed in detail in the workshop, I think the only question that came up was starting?
Yeah, Mark, yeah, by the time of today, I think we're looking at 10 in September.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay.
We'll be here.
All right, we have a motion to approve this quote?
I'll make that one.
Councilmember Brewster, make some motions, have a second.
I'll say.
Okay, any questions, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, no. Motion carries. All right, next item is a resolution to annex certain territory, if only we consider the owners and incorporate the same within the boundaries of the city of Loudoun, Tennessee, thirty-eight, approximately thirty-eight and a half acres, on East Lee Highway, tax amount 33, parcel 23 and 16.
Yes, this is the next step in the annexation process. This body voted to prepare a plan of service for the property and send to a commission for review, that review has been taken, has taken place, it's come back to this body with that approval and recommendation. Your approval tonight of this resolution will trigger a checklist, and we'll be providing notice to the jurisdictions impacted by this, whether county, or the state, and we will take that process to its conclusion.
Okay, this was also part of the public hearing that was held earlier tonight. Okay, we have a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve this resolution.
And you have a second.
Say.
Councilmember Brewster, second. All those in favor, any more discussion, any questions or discussion?
No.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item is approving amended lease agreement in Loudoun Utilities and Loudoun County in response to the 201 home place.
Yes, this is a slight modification to the agreement previously approved by this body. Attorney Pryor represents the county desires for this change, it's a change to one paragraph, just regarding the term of the lease, it's now a two-year lease, with 60 days' notice to terminate.
Attorney Pryor, does this also work in our favor too as well?
Yeah, provides both parties the flexibility they need if something changes with the situation with the courthouse.
Okay. So have a motion to approve the amended lease agreement in Loudoun Utilities in Loudoun County?
I'll make a motion to approve the lease.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll say.
Okay, have a motion, a second, is there any discussion about it, any question? As Manager Ross pointed out, it's just that one item, 10, I think, on the list, that's just a slight modification. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposition, say no. Motion carries. Next item, the resolution is approving the sale of certain property.
Yes, it's directed by this body, as well as the LUP Board, in order to reimburse the water department for a bad water debt. We auctioned off, by public auction, certain lots in the Riverview subdivision. After public bidding, we received a joint bid for two adjoining parcels, for a total take-home for the city price of $9,900. And a larger lot across the street, Hough Sperry, for $29,300, so just under $40,000 total to reimburse the water department.
Not bad for property we didn't know we had, you know? Just keep in mind, this authorizes the city manager to execute the necessary documents, that's what this resolution does.
Half of the bills of the water department.
As Dr. Whit reads, the proceeds will be deposited with Loudoun Utilities Board and Board. Do I have a motion to approve, sell this property?
I'll make a motion to approve the sale of the property.
Okay, you have a second.
Say.
Councilmember Brewster, second. Any other questions about it? Any concerns, questions, discussions?
Just for clarification, all you say, all utility assets, city of Loudoun holds title to it because it's a municipal utility, and so, and it, just for, just a little civics lesson, for everyone, in the event of a real estate change that involves utility assets, whether it be a substation, or lots such as this taken as collateral, we do bring it to both bodies because the city of Loudoun holds title.
When that check comes in, I go.
Okay, have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, say no. Motion carries. Now we have some ordinance on second reading. First one is amended to 2018-2019 fiscal year budget. This is a normal routine.
Well, it's last year's budget, it's a housekeeping amendment that occurs usually at the end of every fiscal year. There are certain happenings during the year, family status has changed, there's illnesses that causes work leave, that you have to backfill, more hover time, things such as that, so this cleans up all those lineups.
Okay, the list is attached, you've seen those amendments in our packet?
There's been no change since last month, so.
Okay. Do I have a motion to amend the 2018-2019 fiscal year budget?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, have a second.
I'll say.
Okay, any questions? Decision, discussion, anything? Okay, we'll ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Bevins?
Aye.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Councilmember Brewster?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye. Next item for ordinance, your second reading, is an ordinance to amend zoning ordinance of the city of Loudoun, meaning chapter four zoning districts, adding an additional section 14-416, which is creating an R3 urban residential district.
Yes, this is a second reading, it does come with the recommendation of the planning commission. It adds a higher density urban residential district, so that single-family homes can be built closer together. This will facilitate more affordable housing in Loudoun, which is the type of housing that, according to the planning commission, according to feedback we've had at several public meetings, is just the type of development that is desired in our community.
This discussion even predates this council, because this was discussed previous councils, so. Okay, this was also part of a public hearing earlier, you have a motion to amend the zoning map.
I'll make a motion to amend the zoning map.
To R3 urban residential district, okay, thank you, Councilmember James, have a second.
I'll say.
Councilmember Dixon, second, is there a roll call, please?
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Councilmember Bevins?
Aye.
Councilmember Brewster?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Thank you.
So that passed on second reading, now we have some on first reading, which is an ordinance to amend Title VII Fire Protection and Fireworks of the city of Loudoun Municipal Code, this was, did I skip one? Oh, I'm sorry. Back to item three, amend the zoning map of the city of Loudoun, Tennessee pursuant to 13-7-203, 13-7-204 of the TCA to rezone property located on East Lee Highway, described as tax map 033, part of parcel 16, part of parcel 23, approximately thirty-eight and a half acres, to be rezoned from Loudoun County zoning A1 Agriculture/Forestry District, and Loudoun County zoning A2 Rural Residential District, M2 Heavy Industrial District.
Yes, this is the exact same property that was petitioned by the owner to come into the city of Loudoun, you approve that annexation. Now, the next step, once it's inside the city, is for you to designate its zoning. Two tracks are currently zoned, rural residential and agricultural forestry, this would rezon them to heavy industrial, which is M2.
Okay. Again, we discussed, and there's a public hearing prior to this meeting, we have a motion to amend the zoning map, M2 Heavy Industrial District.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say for the motion.
Okay, motion, a second, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Councilmember Bevins?
Aye.
Councilmember Brewster?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out, we skipped over that. Okay, on first reading, the ordinance is an ordinance to amend the Title VII Fire Protection and Fireworks of the city of Loudoun Municipal Code.
Yes, this was discussed at our workshop, Loudoun, our chief, Mike Brubaker, went over the proposed ordinance with you, based on your feedback received, there were edits made, including the elimination of the fifty-dollar committee fee, and now the ordinance is back before you with those edits, for the first reading.
Okay, I read over it, it seemed very thorough to me, nice job, Chief Brubaker, it was clear, I think. Lot of discussion, okay, Councilmember Brewster made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll say.
Okay, gentlemen, all right, we have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brewster?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Councilmember Bevins?
Aye.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Thank you.
So let's set a public hearing for 6:20?
September 20, I'm sorry, September 16.
Sixteen. Next item is amending the personal rules and regulations of the city of Loudoun, this has been discussed for several months, meetings, and Councilman Dixon, working on this pretty intense. Councilman Dixon, I'll just turn it over to you, if you have something to say.
There's been one addition to the policy that has been written, and it is a firefighter fitness, fitness policy, and it wants out that must be able to demonstrate and perform physical aspects outlined in the job description for firefighter, or must possess a certification from the state of Tennessee as a firefighter, and must possess a certification as a emergency medical responder from the Tennessee Department of Health, and consideration of a qualified and certified long-tender, part-time firefighting fire department employee over at full-time city or utility employee transfer. Those will be added to this policy.
If it's, if it's.
If it's, if it's approved.
Any, do I have a motion that we amend the personal rules and regulations as submitted with the document we read with this change, which I think this makes seniority the number one criteria for jobs? Motion.
I've spoken to a lot of employees and a lot of department heads, and several citizens have also kind of been concerned in this, and the one thing that I got from everyone on this is they understand what you're doing, and they appreciate it very much, employees really appreciate what you're doing, department heads as well. The overall worry with the policy is the job bid sheet, and those types of things. The one thing that I did ask, and everyone did tell me, is their main concern with employees is applying for a job and not being interviewed. Across the board, I heard that. And personally, I don't see a problem with us, you know, because I think we all have a good enough conversation with Jason and Ty both, that if we haven't, that if we so choose to do so, if an employee applies for something, ground an interview. I mean, it may not, may not be the right fit for them, but then they might interview for it, and they might change somebody's mind at another department. But I don't know that we need to do a policy change for it. I think that we can say, hey, Jason, if somebody applies, that's an employee, give them an interview, and I think he would do that. Now, if we saw later down the road that he didn't do that, we might want to put it in writing to change that policy. I don't know that we need the policy change to get that part of it changed. That's what I heard from everyone I spoke with, that was their major concern, was employees getting interviews for jobs they applied for.
That was a major concern, and that's one reason I wrote this policy out. And another reason is, for this policy also, is to keep you out of political field. This is to keep Ty, Jason out of political field, until they can't become to the point to where there's nobody bid on a job, then they have to go outside to find that person. Then it becomes political, with Ty, with Jason, and with this board, or with the utility board, whichever one we're looking at. So, you know, that's why we wrote this policy, is another reason to keep you out of that.
I mean, I personally think the personal rules and regulations we passed just a few months ago is very thorough. I like what we passed, and I trust Jason and Ty, I mean, that empowers them to make their decisions. I'm comfortable with what we have, myself.
But if you didn't have enough to watch this in?
No.
I just want to get away from, I'm going to hire you, even though you don't have a skill whatsoever, I'm going to hire you to do a skilled position, I'm going to send you to school, train you, and see if you like it, if you don't like it, you can go back to your job. We can't be in the business like this, there's just, there's just no way.
We constantly train people, and then bump the people around, I think.
And if, if a guy knows a job's coming up, and it's a skilled position, if he don't have, or her don't have the initiative to go out on their own and get some education about that job, or work with somebody on that job, then I don't think they want the job, I think they want the pay. They do want the pay. They also want the opportunity to be able to, to be able to perform these jobs if they want them. If they don't want them, they're not going to bid on them. But what you're saying, Tim, is. But you don't know if it'll work or not, because nothing like that's ever been here. But say we hire somebody from the street department to be a policeman, we're going to send them to the academy, that's $12,000 now, $15,000, send somebody through there? Well, by the time you have to back, backfill and pay somebody's salary, you probably would be. That's just at the academy, it's 12, 15,000. We invest $15,000 sending this person to the academy, they come back and work as a policeman for three days, out of like this, that money's gone, we don't get it back.
And their jobs have been filled.
Their job's been filled, with this new policy, every we hired, we're going to fire them, give this person opportunity to go back to their job. Did you think about putting that policy into his? That's what it says. Yeah, but what you just said, if they get into this, and you paid out all this money for them, did you think about putting that in that policy, that they have paid back? But that would turn into a civil suit. No, that would be a civil suit. Because you just can't say you go to the city twelve thousand dollars. If it's in your policy. Collecting the money is the problem. If they're going to continue being employees, you're collecting. And more likely, they would. I like your idea with it, I think there are just too many, too many, too many ways we can get the mayor to not have the right employees in the right position.
As I say, we've discussed it for a couple of months.
Yeah.
Councilman Dixon, Councilman Dixon would like to have this to a vote, so I'm going to ask for a motion to amend our personal rules and regulations to adopt this new policy. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I can give, I'll give you a second, just, just to get it on the floor for a vote. You can, I can vote for it, I'm sorry, I'll second your motion, just to get it up for a vote.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, so we'll ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Councilmember Brewster?
No.
Councilmember Bevins?
No.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
No.
Motion's denied. Thanks for your work on that.
Thank you.
There are some appointments I need to make to the Industrial Development Board. Attorney Pryor, I need to take all these rooms individually.
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, the first one is Joe Newman, I'd like to recommend him, I'll need a motion, and a second, we have to elect these. I'd recommend Joe Newman to continue serving on the Industrial Development Board, do I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll say.
Okay, thank you, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, say no. Okay, he's approved. Next one is replacement for Judy Keller, I'd like to recommend Jackie Leffler, do I have a motion for that?
I'll make my own motion, please.
Okay, motion denied. Councilmember James, you second.
I'll say.
Okay, Councilmember Dixon, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The last one for reappointment is Ruth Henderson McQueen, she would like to continue serving, so I'd like to recommend her to have a motion.
I'll make one.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember James, have a second.
I'll say.
Councilmember Dixon, second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, that looks like that's all the appointments, maybe until December.
And it's a six-year term?
Yes, that's a six-year term.
August of 2025.
Right, and with those, that each, each board has different qualifications, these happen to be duly qualified electors of, and taxpayers of the city, and they can't be an officer employed with the city's certifications, so they all agree to serve. Okay, we're done with executive session. Attorney Pryor, that's our executive session, do you want to do the department reports? We can, yeah, we can do the department report first, thank you. Yeah, we can do the department report first, thank you. Department reports, Chief Brubaker, anything you'd want to report, Mayor? Okay. Thank you. Chief Webb has a special guest.
Thank you. I wanted to just briefly say that we don't have any, anything that is not normally what we normally talk about. For example, we've had street festival, and then, of course, we had our National Night Out. And National Night Out, I thought was a real big success. I can't take any credit for it. A lot of the departments, the emergency services, all worked together to put that thing together. I was a little bit surprised, because we used to do National Night Out about twelve, thirteen years ago. I think a big difference is the onset of social media now, so you can kind of get the word out what's going on. And so, you put those fire trucks out there, and the police cars, and the ambulances, and the blue lights, and the red lights all going, and it seemed to draw a crowd. And it was, it was really good, and I think well received. I want to thank each one of you all for coming out and supporting it. I didn't get to see everybody. I got hot and left a little early. But thanks to Councilmember Rooster that always takes the pictures and posts them on Facebook. I got to see everybody who was there, and I really appreciate your support. I appreciate all the emergency departments. You know, we had, not just the City of Loudoun Police Department, we had the Fire Department, had Priority EMS, had the nine-one-one center was there represented, and the Loudoun County Sheriff's Department, the Tennessee Highway Patrol. So I thought it was a good event to have all those emergency services there in downtown Loudoun, and everybody get to come and just be involved and, and socialize with everybody. Uh, the other thing that I wanted to talk to you about, and I'm going to be brief, because I've got a guest here to talk to you. Most of you know that myself and Travis Grace serve on the nine-one-one board. And to use a phrase from our city manager, Ty Wallace, to give you a little civics lesson, the Loudoun County nine-one-one is a municipality. It's an entity of itself, just like the City of Loudoun. And how we're able to operate is obviously from ratepayers' revenues and from taxpayers' revenues. And so with that in mind, I wanted to tell you that back in June, we had, in communication circles, what we would call a catastrophic event. And our staff at nine-one-one worked really hard to get us through that catastrophe, was able to do it, what I would say seamlessly. Most of the folks, the general public, would never know that there was any issue that happened, because they did such a good job and worked so hard. The only person that's a member of our board that is not someone involved in emergency services is, most of you know, Commissioner David Mears. And he represents the county commission on our board. And as we worked through this, we had our, our meeting last Thursday, and we sort of finished up everything that we had dealt with. And he just said, you know, most folks don't have any idea that this catastrophe has happened, and that our staff and our boards have to work so hard to go through this. And he wanted our director, our nine-one-one director, write a letter to the county board and both the city boards. Well, I had a different idea. I thought that I could get our nine-one-one director to come up here and tell you all about it. So with that, I'd like to introduce Loudoun County nine-one-one Director, Ms. Jennifer White.
Thank you for having me. As Chief Webb mentioned, it was just an idea when we talked about it, because the city has obviously had representation on the nine-one-one board since its inception in nine-one. So we've had Chief Brubaker to serve on that board, as well as Chief Webb, Chief Anderson in the past, and then, of course, Travis Grace here currently. So just in open communication, and when we talked, the city council members have changed a lot since, I think, the last time I came and spoke with the city council leader and even the city manager. Most of the communication is through your board members, but we just wanted to kind of let you know what happened with the lightning strike. And in our world, we have crisis every day, and we just respond to them. And so, I guess we just kind of continue on. But we realized when we were talking, this was a huge event, and we wanted to make sure that our municipalities and our county government understood the magnitude of it and, and what we kind of did, so that the citizens know what services they're getting. We're kind of one of those out of sight, out of mind places. I call it the split foyer effect. If you've ever worked on an ambulance and carried a patient out of the house, you're probably not going to be able to split foyer to do so, because it makes it a little more complicated. So unless you need nine-one-one, you don't always think about it. It's there, and you just know it's there, and kind of take it for granted, and may not understand how the, the operations are. So we are, like Chief Webb said, our main funding comes from the county of Loudoun. They cover salaries, a portion of salaries and benefits. We also get funding from the surcharges on devices that can connect to nine-one-one, landlines, cell phones, things that can call nine-one-one. A portion of that that goes through the state government, and then comes back to us. But on June the fourteenth, as Chief Webb said, we took a direct lightning strike. We have several grounding mechanisms in place. Unfortunately, this was a direct hit, and so it actually burned the sides of our phone lines as it came into the facility. All the experts we've had dealing with it are saying it's a good thing we had wireless headsets for our employees, so there were no injuries when this happened, so we're thankful for that. All in all, we, we have eight working physicians that we can take nine-one-one calls to dispatch public safety through. And we actually went down and had two that were operational at, at the impact. All in all, we had close to eight hundred thousand dollars in damages with our equipment. That included everything from our entire phone system, our entire radio dispatch system, the gates, and all the ancillary equipment, you know, smart boards, computers, and things that were in the building. Thankfully, we have a full board thinking board, and so we took place mechanisms that will back up, so if we have a failure. We have a lot of unique things in our county. If we have a nine-one-one failure, we have immediate rollover systems inside the building that a customer calling or a citizen calling nine-one-one would never know that there was an issue. It's just a different path that we go through. We also have a mobile nine-one-one center that the board equipped, to where if we had to leave the building for any reason, we can operate out of that mobile nine-one-one center, and the citizen wouldn't know the difference of whether we were in the facility or in the mobile. What makes that different is, in this circumstance, if we didn't have those backup measures in place, we would have had to routed all of our calls to an adjacent county. So then we would have had another county taking all of our emergency calls, which can happen if we had to, but thankfully, we don't have to do that. So we had about a total of ten-minute downtime, where we did have to reroute phone calls. There were no nine-one-one calls that were missed during the time, no radio transmissions missed, our employees, you know, went straight into their backup and emergency plans. But just to give you an idea of the cost of our equipment, and you think phone systems, you just don't realize how much there is in there. So our phone system to replace was four hundred fifty-one thousand seven hundred fifty-nine dollars. Our radio system, two sixty-two, five hundred. And then our ancillary systems make up the other eighty-five thousand. So again, fortunately, with my board, they forward-thinking, have an insurance company that specializes in public safety. So to date, we've received five hundred fifty thousand from the insurance company to help offset those costs. Some of the differences were upgrades in the systems. Our systems had been in place when we built the facility back in two thousand and ten. So we had to upgrade where we'll be able to take text to nine-one-one when that comes out in the next few months, probably less than a year timeframe. Some of the upgrades that we needed happened, did happen at the same time. So the new system's going to offer a lot more flexibility for our responders, our county's sheriff's departments on one frequency, Loudoun cities on another, Linnor cities on another. Those things will be able to integrate into our system a little more seamlessly than what we have now. The other nice thing that we did as a board, we purchased a ten-year upgrade system. So that cost will cover any upgrades, anything that we need, software hardware-wise, in the next ten-year timeframe, which is almost unheard of in, in our world. Most equipment's a five- to seven-year lifespan. So we just wanted to give you a summary, let you know where we stand with everything, and see if you have any questions about the event.
Mark, this week, I thought you was going to ask.
Well, not today, not today.
See, y'all do a really good job, you know, you'd be getting like that, and then.
You got one of the best awards and everything, you know.
We have.
You did, you won a big one.
Um, not, I, I don't think I've won an award recently that I can think of, but I was elected to serve on the National Nine-One Association, so I represent the second vice president for the National Association of Loudoun Centers.
Want to mention your special guests coming on Wednesday?
Uh, yes. On Wednesday, we have legislative visit. The Lieutenant Governor McAllen will be on site, as well as Representative Lowell Russell. They'll be at the facility at ten o'clock. You're welcome to join us if you'd like. The mayor's coming to visit. They're coming to do a tour of the nine-one-one center and, and kind of see how things operating now that we went through that event. It was such a large event, and thankfully, a lot of nine-one-one centers don't have to go through that on a regular basis. And our staff was tremendous, they were. As, as Chief Webb mentioned, it was a seamless transition, and, and people wouldn't know the difference. They worked so calmly under stress. It was a little stressful, but they made it through.
Well, thank for your board, too. I think you've got a good board that supports what you do, and so that's a big difference. Any questions or comments? Jennifer? Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Hey, other department report, Director Brand, anything?
No, sir.
Ellis?
Here's one thing we're working on, is only trying to be careful of all the handicap patching, and we're behind on that. But it's not, it's pretty busy, and we're still working on it, but we can.
Okay. Do you know when the handicap lots, spots are going to be painted down there?
Yes, he's, uh, they've been, the contact reward that he started working on, just kind of.
Okay.
Sound bad.
All right. Hey, Mr. Gray, you have anything?
No, sir.
That's all. Oh, the, oh, sorry.
Just wanted to thank you for your vote on the investment policy, and that's definitely a step in the right direction for our community. I'm excited to report back to you the impact on our financial, on our interest service. And in addition to that, I want to welcome our municipal county team member, Ryan Moore. He's been with us for two weeks. I could read off his resume, which would, you'd be very, very impressed with, but I will tell you that last week, last Monday, which was day six on the job with him, we had another accounting team member who had to be out of the office unexpectedly. She was out all week, and this was a completely unfortunate event. And it says a lot about a person whenever you take a stack of work that he has yet to lay eyes on ever before and say, I need you to do this, and it gets done. And that's really, I'm really excited to welcome him to the team, and excited for the City of Loudoun and Loudoun Utilities to have this talent to the best. Welcome to Ryan.
We're glad to welcome both of you new positions. Thank you. Any other department report? Mark Carroll, I think you've got something.
Oh, come on, I thought you missed me.
I was saying you to last.
And I wasn't going to say it, man, since Chief Webb, I gave it out, I thought I thought I got it. It's a brief delay of a couple of things. Of course, Saturday night's River Fest started around five o'clock, and I see there's a couple of us filed here tonight from the utility board, kind of taking you guys out, preparing for the hot dog eating contest. Seven-thirty, be prepared, have all the condoms, and feel the joy of eating the hot dog. We've had a great year, pool this year, we've set record numbers of spark participation. I'll have those numbers next month for you to look at a little better, but we, we as well, had some electrical problems out there that's really useful, I was a bit blocked, but the numbers have been great. And we had two hundred this past Saturday, with Doug Hurley over this time of year. These people are all, they're all the cool of this time.
Weather's probably helping you out there.
Weather that was a bit, so that didn't matter to me. Thank you very much. Hope to stay a record with Doug Saturday night.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Anybody else have other ideas? Chairman Campbell's already been up here trying to intimidate us, you know, so. He's throwing some threats around, any councilmen, James?
Said something about spreading the virus.
I don't know what, but.
There's no, there's no, uh, substitute for compliments.
I want to say, Loudoun dogs.
Hang in there, pal. I've got a plan, I've got a plan.
Tony's ready.
I've been, I've been formulating this since last year.
How many did you eat last year?
I ate seven last year.
Seven.
I contemplated eating, I said, well, I don't know if I should or not, but I did. But this year, I'm going all out.
That's just appetizer this year, seven.
If we have a five-minute break, I'll be through to seven for the five minutes.
You can get weather, I think, great, I tell you. It's got wind on you.
All right, councilmember reports. Councilmember Diller, we'll start with you. Anything?
Uh, nothing that you all want to hear again from the workshop, so nothing's changed since then. We're moving forward.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Rooster?
He gave me a, a contact number for the VFW branch of Telco Village. I talked to the guy, and I told him I'd bring this up tonight. Jennifer, this might be good for you to know. The Telco Village VFW has a ton of money they're needing to spend on veterans or veteran families. So if you run across somebody, and there you can let your guys know, a veteran or his family that's in need of even financial repair on the homes, I'll give you the contact number, or you can call me, and he's ready to move forward. It's a good organization, the way you talk.
Okay. Thank you for that information, you think, yeah? Okay. Vice Mayor Dixon, you have anything?
Well, the utility board, AMI, AMI projects, um, part of the way. It's a fight that may be at the schedule. And then the Highland New Project, they're on the schedule, and hopefully be done September. And maybe be done October. I was all excited, but we were down a hundred dollars, I had one, got one of a hundred and a half. I stick a bag in it, I'll be here.
Councilmember James, you have anything?
Just like, thank you everybody for coming out, spending some time with us, listening to what we have to say, and looking forward to Saturday.
Bring it up. That's the thing.
Separate, separate men and boys that day, will you?
You're representing city council, I'm representing utilities.
Well, let's put it this way, I've not, since this has been going on, and I think Mark will verify what I'm saying, I've not been on a losing team, have I, Mark? Yeah. What can I say?
You know.
That's right. As Mark mentioned, let's remember River Fest, and also, Wednesday, August twenty-eighth, the EVA is putting together a strategic planning session with TBA. Director Wallace, you want to say anything about that?
All right, someone was talking to me, I missed that.
Strategic planning session you have planned by TBA?
Yes, TBA will be coming in next week. We'll be sitting down with them, discussing moving forward with a strategic plan. I think that was identified for parts of the year, and part of their local agreements that was not addressed, but we may address that moving forward.
I think an invitation was sent in, dear, and I'm going to try to attend that, that feature schedule.